The Tuesday, May 3, 2022, meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We start each city council meeting with a brief announcement explaining open podium invitation. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues that are related to Eden Prairie city government prior to each city council meeting, which are typically held the first and third Tuesday of each month. These open podiums occur from 6:30 to 6:55 here in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please do contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and subject matter so we can be better prepared for you. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, the mayor will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please do contact the city manager's office. We now have embedded within the normal city council meeting an HRA, Housing Redevelopment Authority Meeting. Again, some cities have these as special different entities or bodies. Here in Eden Prairie, the city council functions as the HRA. So I now call the HRA meeting to order. Let's see, typically, do we not need a roll call for that?
We do not need a roll call.
Okay.
But you've done one in the past. So you, your memory is correct, Mayor, but you've done, but you don't need to do one. So
Right.
we're saving, we're saving
For making a mistake.
No, you didn't make a mistake. You just remember, right? But we don't need to do it.
All right. It sounds good to me. So called the meeting to order. We now need to approve the minutes of the HR last meeting held, which was back on April 5. These are becoming monthly ordeals or affairs, April 5, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the HRA minutes from April 5, 2022? And if you do have a concern, we'll take that up after we have a motion and a second.
I'll move, yeah, I'll move to approve the HRA minutes from April 5, 2022.
Is there a second? Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, aye, opposed. All right, Mr. Getcho, we have one item before us this evening.
Mayor, we have two, but
We have two items before us this evening.
We do it. Two, the second HRA item's more of a housekeeping item, but this is the, this item relates to a project that the city council has recently approved. It's a housing project, Greco Properties, housing project, a 425-unit mixed-income housing project on Flying Cloud Drive. This is in the Golden Triangle, near the light rail station that's planned for that area. So that particular project, you've already approved as a city council, and you actually also held a public hearing at a recent meeting to consider providing tax increment financing. And I'll give a brief overview of that again, but we held a public hearing to consider providing tax increment financing for this four- and five-story building that I mentioned, in which 20% of the units, so that'd be 49 of those units, would be affordable to residents earning at or below 50% of the AMI. And that's typically what many of our tax increment financing projects have done in Eden Prairie. In addition, though, the city does have an inclusionary housing ordinance, and so there are an additional number of units that would be affordable at 80% of the AMI. And then, as I said, the additional units, that'd be 12 units, the additional 176 units would be market rate. So the, between the public hearing and tonight, our financial advisor has prepared a full modification to the redevelopment plan and the paperwork necessary to establish this TIF district. So that's all in your packet. So the action that's needed from the HRA is to adopt a resolution approving this new TIF district and providing that tax increment financing for the Greco housing project that will be coming.
Counsel, questions? If not, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll move to adopt the resolution, adopting a modification to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment project area number five and establishing a tax increment financing district number 26. GTS Housing, adopt a tax increment financing plan therefore and approve the TIF development agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Mr. Getcho, the second order of business in our HRA meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. There may be many instances where we need to bring back to the HRA TIF agreements that are assigned between owners of properties and banks or different agencies. And so to streamline the process, our city attorneys prepared a resolution and recommended that the HRA could adopt a resolution that allows for when these TIF assignments to occur, that they could be done administratively and not need to go through the full HRA. And she created objective criteria, which requires that to occur. And so that's the second, that's the next item of the HRA meeting is adopting a resolution approving assignment of TIF agreement objective criteria.
How many times annually a year does this occur? Once, twice, very rarely?
I would say maybe once a year.
Okay.
That, in my experience, sometimes it's a financing issue. Sometimes they're transferring the whole project, but.
And then of all of those in the, Maggie, you haven't been here 10 years, but let's just say typically over a 10-year period, how many of those, would nearly all of them meet your objective requirements?
Maybe Julie could speak to that question. I don't, I don't recall in my time here us having denied an assignment, but.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm not aware of any instance where the city has denied an assignment.
Okay. Sounds, anytime we streamline the processes, I think that's a good thing. Counsel, any questions? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution approving TIF assignment objective criteria.
Is there a second?
A second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, is there a motion to adjourn the HRA meeting?
Sure, I will move to adjourn the HRA meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, we are moving back into the regular council meeting. Proclamations and presentations, Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You spent the last hour in workshop getting a detailed presentation on the city's financial statements for 2021 and the audit. But we ask that our auditors also present their results of their audit and a quick overview of our comprehensive financial report for 2021 to the, the full city council in a regular meeting, and then ask that you accept that. So we have our audit director here from our auditing firm to present a quick overview, a little bit quicker than downstairs, but still an overview of the city's audit and financial statements.
Great, thank you. Welcome.
All right, thank you. Very much for having me here tonight. My name's Andy Greis from Bergen KDV, here to present the audit report for the year ended December 31, 2021.
Do you want to pull the mic up just a little bit towards you and maybe in the back room, just up it a little bit?
All right. To start, just wanted to highlight our independent auditor's report and just go over our responsibility as your auditor and the responsibility of management. It's our job as your auditor to come in and perform audit procedures to form an opinion, and that is based on our audit procedures to test, examine, and look at the underlying documentation to support the numbers and disclosures in your financial statements. And it's management's responsibility to prepare the financial statements. And when it comes to that opinion, we're giving a clean or an unmodified opinion, which is the best that we can give as your auditor, meaning this is a true and accurate presentation of the financial position of the city at the, at the end of the year in all material respects. We also issued our report on government auditing standards. This report has us take a look at internal control over financial reporting, and we're required to report any deficiencies in internal control that rise to a material weakness or significant deficiency level. Also required to report any compliance-related matters, however, there were no findings to report in this, this report. We also performed a single audit. This occurs whenever the city expends more than $750,000 more or more in federal funds, and we are required to take a look at compliance over those major federal programs, as well as internal control over those programs, and there were no findings to report in that report. And then lastly, also issued our report on Minnesota legal compliance. The office as a state auditor has us take a look at certain legal provisions, and if anything comes to our attention, our attention that causes us to believe that the city didn't comply with those certain legal provisions, required to report those in this report. However, there were no compliance findings to report. So it's as clean as of a report that we can give as your auditor. Next, just wanted to highlight some of the information that's provided in our communications letter. That includes the required communication we're required to provide in accordance with auditing standards. And also, we include our financial analysis that provides some trend data. And we start by taking a look at general fund revenues. General fund revenues increased this year about $2.1 million. A couple of the fluctuations here to highlight here, or excuse me, increase of $2.8 million. And a couple of the areas to highlight was an increase in taxes and assessments of about $1.5 million due to an increase in levy. Intergovernmental revenues increased this year about $885,000 due to more funds being received here back in 2020 related to the coronavirus relief funds. The ARPA funding was a little bit less this year in 2021, so it did have a decrease, excuse me, of $885,000. Licenses and permits revenue increased $861,000 due to new construction and the building activity within the city. And charges for services increased $1.7 million due to an increase in registration and memberships as we rebound from the COVID-19 pandemic. The other revenue sources decreased this year from $1 million to about $560,000. That category includes earnings from investments, and due to worsening market conditions, we did see a decrease in that category. Next, we'll highlight the general fund expenditures here over the last five years. And from 2020 to 2021, we did see an increase in expenditures of about $2.1 million. And to highlight some of the fluctuations between each function of government here, police had an increase of about $788,000 due to an increase in wages and benefits. Parks and recreation increased about $1.3 million. And again, more programming and activities here in 2021 compared to 2020. And other functions remained relatively consistent or comparable to the prior year. Next, we'll highlight the budget to actual results. This highlights city council's responsibility as it relates to the financial statements, and that's adopting and monitoring the budget. The final budget called for $49.7 million in revenue, $50.1 million in expenditures. And after considering other financing sources and uses, it was anticipated that fund balance would decrease by $30,000. Actual revenues came in over budget by about 8.2% or $4 million. And a couple areas to highlight here, licenses and permits came in over budget by $2 million. Again, here having a conservative budget for licenses and permits activity within the city. Intergovernmental revenues came in $4 million better than anticipated. The American Rescue Plan did provide intergovernmental fund, intergovernmental revenue to the city that was not included in that final budget. And charges for services were $2.3 million less than anticipated, and that relates to memberships and registrations related to the community programs here and still not quite at the levels pre-pandemic. So did see amounts come in under budget there. On the expenditure side, in total, revenues came in under budget by about 4.3% or $2.1 million. And the largest fluctuation there was in parks and recreation coming in under budget by $1.1 million, again, related to the programming in that area. Next, we'll take a look at the general fund operations here over the last five years. And with the current year operations, with total revenues exceeding expenditures, we did see an increase in cash and investment balances, as well as an increase in the unassigned fund balance, increasing from $26.2 million to $29.1 million. And that is in compliance with the city's policy. There is a fund balance policy in place to maintain a minimum fund balance policy for working capital and other needs. And again, that fund balance is within that policy, in compliance with that policy. Next, wanted to highlight general fund revenues per capita. So when we look at this data, we did provide some statewide averages as well, as well as three years to compare for the city of Eden Prairie. And in 2021, we did see an increase in revenues per capita going from 1,140 to 1,165. We saw increases in the charges for services area, and again, that was due to the rebound from the pandemic and related registrations and memberships coming back online here for 2021. And overall, that was the largest increase here. And also compared to the, the comparable information is for 2020. And when compared to the 2020 numbers for City of Eden Prairie, it is relatively consistent.
But to get that, actual apples to apples, we'd really probably want to disaggregate the data closer to cities of 60,000 to 70,000, which could be done. But just to let people know if they're watching, that these are really good numbers, and I don't know necessarily that you see that automatically when you have such a broad range of 20,000 to 100,000 cities.
Sure, sure. Next, we'll go over expenditures per capita. And this provides this, this chart provides information for current expenditures, as well as capital outlay and construction, as well as debt service. And for current expenditures, we did see an increase for the city of Eden Prairie going from $766 per capita to $800 per capita. And the main driver there was parks and recreation, again, with an increase in, increase in activity in that function. And just to highlight the comparable, the comparable information to statewide averages for 2020, we do have lower administration costs per capita than the information that's provided for the statewide averages and higher parks and recreation expenditures per capita, as there is a, a large community program here and within the city. On the capital outlay and construction side, did have a little bit of a decrease. Is that, is that area cyclical with the variable projects that are occurring within cities? And the debt service portion did have a significant increase this year per capita going from $73 to $197 per capita. And in 2021, there was a debt refunding, which did pay off the 2012 A and 2012, 2012 B refunding bond. So we did see a related increase in that ratio.
I have to add something here. Depending if someone at home is paying very close attention, these might, numbers might look a little bit worrisome. They're not. That it's good to, from an auditor's standpoint, to show statewide comparisons, but it's not apples to apples when, as you noted, at the end, we have a debt that we paid off one year. These are one-year out-of-pocket expenses that inflate that number arbit, not arbitrarily, but out of context. So I just wanted to make sure people understand if they're looking at this closely, that there's a, there's a lot of context underneath them.
Yes, lots of variabilities between cities and, between cities. So yeah, important to understand that component as well.
And last, just, just to add, because the, our per capita number the last two years is like $50 a resident or $50 per capita. And that compares to about 150 to 170 in other jurisdictions. If not for that refunding, that number would be at that $50 number, Mayor. So that's just a comparison. That was a refunding. It wasn't new debt. There's no new debt issued for that purpose.
Great, thank you.
And the last chart that we have here is to highlight tax capacity, the certified tax levy and tax rate. The tax capacity within the city is tied to market values, and that increased 3.5% to $120.6 million. The certified tax levy also increased about 3.5% to just over $41 million. And as a result, we are seeing fairly consistent tax capacity rate compared 2020 and also back to 2017. This is the lowest tax capacity rate in the five years presented. And that is a high-level review of the financial analysis in our audit reports. And just like to open up for any further comments or questions.
Sure. Actually, if that slide could go back up. Thank you. Thank you, Andy. You did a great job. And appreciate the, the work that you do, but also the work that our financial staff does. And year after year, we get these phenomenal audit reports, which not only show that we're doing an incredibly ethically responsible job of spending the taxpayer money, but it also shows comparatively how strong we are relative to some other cities. But I just want to point out to, again, people either in the audience or at home watching this, that the two bottom, the golden rod in the blue, are really the most important. The top number's exciting to see that our value of our businesses and homes is going up and up and up. In fact, I'm guessing next year, it's going to be a fairly steep rise out of the 120 million of tax base there. And is that in thousands or not? No, because we have a, what, a 10 or 12 billion? Why am I?
Yeah, that's, Mayor, that's the capacity. So
I'm sorry, thank you.
Yeah, the actual, you're, you're correct, though. The value's like close to 12 billion.
Thank you, tax capacity. But at any rate, when, what drives people's taxes are those bottom two lines, and particularly how much the city council decides to raise in tax funding. But then based on our tax capacity, if that's going up and up and up, then we need to charge less and less and less per $1,000 of value. And that is always a healthy city, a healthy economic portion or part of a city when that blue line is going down. And for five straight years, our tax rate has been going down. And I'm, I'm sure that healthy cities all around us can say the same, but a lot of cities cannot. And over the last 20, 30 years, I've come across several examples of cities whose tax rates were continuing to climb, and they were not healthy. And that meant their tax, their housing values were going, in some cases, down, even as they had to continue to raise the same amount of taxes. So this is really good news. And it's, it really is outside of the audit. Thank you for verifying and validating that these numbers are accurate and correct. That being said, these are really healthy numbers. And I, I thank our, again, our council for driving the policy and procedures that drive this, but also our staff with Tammy and Sarah and everyone else that works with our financial reports. So, Counsel, anything else? Questions or comments?
We still have our AAA rating correct for money. And that also is good news.
Yes, and we are one of a handful of cities, there's actually quite a few, but not, not the majority by any means, that have that strong, strong rating. So, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for having me.
Look forward to seeing you next year.
Thank you.
Yes, we do. We need a motion to accept the comprehensive annual financial report or audit.
I'll move to accept the 2021 annual comprehensive financial report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Again, just really, I love it when we have the continued good news, especially in the financial arena. So, super great for our residents. All right, an exciting next award here to present. So, Mr. Getcho, do you want to turn it right over to, or do you want to take it?
I can start, Mayor, thank you. Yeah, very excited. We have an annual Heritage Preservation Award that our Heritage Preservation Commission works very hard on every year and ultimately recognizes an individual, family, or business that has gone above and beyond to promote, preserve, rehabilitate, or restore our city's historic and heritage resources. So I am pleased to present a member of our commission, Vice Chair Paul Thorpe, I believe, is coming up to present this year's award.
Welcome, Mr. Thorpe.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, commission, members, staff, my name is Paul Thorpe. I'm Vice Chair of the Heritage Preservation Commission. I've served on the commission for seven years and have had the privilege of serving with the recipient of tonight's award of those years. Tonight, I'll offer a few remarks and provide some background on this year's Heritage Preservation Award recipient, Stephen Olson. This is the sixth Eden Prairie Heritage Preservation Award. The award recognizes, recognizes an individual, a family, or a business who has made an outstanding contribution to Eden Prairie's historic resources, public or private. Steve served on the Heritage Preservation Commission for nine years, beginning in 2012, and was commission chair from 2015 to 2011. I first met Steve when we were interviewing for the commission in 2015, my first term, Steve's second. And when introducing ourselves to new members of the commission, Steve would sometimes refer to himself as, as a overeducated farm boy. And I would introduce myself as an undereducated land surveyor. So who says history geeks aren't funny, right? Steve's a resident of Eden Prairie, and he was an outstanding leader who brought a sense of calm and orderliness to the commission meetings. Our commission meetings can get a little off tangent. A lot of times, people get scattered ideas, and, and Steve would wrangle them in like, like he's herding cats, and we'd get back to the business at hand. His wealth of knowledge about history and historic preservation proved invaluable when sharing ideas, making suggestions, and directing the group in their decision-making. The commission had many successes under Steve's leadership. Each completed project supports the ongoing use and preservation of Eden Prairie's historic resources. Some of the successes include the Glen Lake Children's Camp building and site improvements, the photo display at City Hall, the interpretive panel at the city's water reservoir, the designation of the Yorkville and Bluelington Road as a heritage preservation site, the second floor repairs at the Cummins House, and the Hennepin Town Site archaeological study. Steve's dedication to historic preservation is woven throughout his professional and personal life. He's a civil engineer with a focus on bridges and has an interest in the preservation of historic bridges. He's on the Minnesota State Historic Preservation Review Board, which reviews nominations for the National Register of Historic Places. And he's a faculty member for the National Preservation Institute, a nonprofit that provides continuing education and professional training in historic preservation and cultural resource management. The depth of knowledge Steve's gained from these roles has made a profound impact on preservation in Eden Prairie. Steve's work on the Heritage Preservation Commission can be seen throughout the community. His contributions will continue to influence residents and visitors to Eden Prairie for many years to come. Recipient of the 2022 Heritage Preservation Award is Steve Olson. After I got Beth's email, I had a few days here to think about why history is important in Eden Prairie. And I thought about three ways I can connect current events that we face in 2022 with Eden Prairie's history and how that history helps me. So the first current event I'd like to talk about is COVID. And so I'm sick of COVID. I'm sick of things up my nose, in my arm, things being isolated and things like that. But from our history, I'm encouraged because we fought a fight in this city against a respiratory disease 110 years ago. We fought tuberculosis in the 1910s out at Glen Lake Children's Camp. And so at that time, thousands of Minnesotans were losing their life to tuberculosis. And so people fought the disease, not with vaccines, but they fought it with buildings where people could get fresh air and get treatment. And so if we have another wave of virus or another splurge of things where we need to buckle down, I think I'll walk out to Glen Lake Children's Camp or Camp Edenwood, as we know it today, look at those old buildings and get a little courage from our forefathers and foremothers who fought tuberculosis out there. The second current event that I'd like to talk about is the conflict in Ukraine. And so it's discouraging to see a conflict like that
After I got Beth's email, I had a few days here to think about why history is important in Eden Prairie. And I thought about three ways I can connect current events that we face in 2022 with Eden Prairie's history and how that history helps me. So the first current event I'd like to talk about is COVID. And so I'm sick of COVID. I'm sick of things up my nose, in my arm, things being isolated and things like that. But from our history, I'm encouraged because we fought a fight in this city against a respiratory disease 110 years ago. We fought tuberculosis in the 1910s out at Glen Lake Children's Camp. And so, at that time, thousands of Minnesotans were losing their life to tuberculosis. And so, people fought the disease, not with vaccines, but they fought it with buildings where people could get fresh air and get treatment. And so if we have another wave of virus or another splurge of things where we need to buckle down, I think I'll walk out to Glen Lake Children's Camp, or Camp Edenwood, as we know it today, look at those old buildings, and get a little courage from our forefathers and foremothers who fought tuberculosis out there. The second current event that I'd like to talk about is the conflict in Ukraine. And so, it's discouraging to see a conflict like that in the 21st century. It's disappointing and alarming, the images and stories that are coming out of Ukraine. And so personally, I wonder how I should react, how our community should react, how the state should react, and how our country should react. And when I look at our history, I realize those questions are not new. We've been thinking about the same things in Eden Prairie for 170 years, those same questions. 55 years ago, roughly, the US was in the Vietnam War. Young men and women needed to figure out how they would respond to, to the war itself. It was a draft system in place. It was an unpopular war at home, and so people needed to sort out what they would do. A young man growing up south of the airport in Eden Prairie, Seaver Peterson, had to sort through those questions. He sorted through them and decided he would volunteer to go to Vietnam, not as a soldier, but as a medic. And he would go twice. And I think he made a good choice in how to respond. Looking further back, 170 years ago, the very first European settlers here settled on the banks of, up on the hillsides of the Minnesota River Valley here. And they had to think about conflict and war in a different way because they heard below them Native American tribes fighting in the valley below. And I'm sure they worried about what their response should be as well. So my third and last touch point, or current affair, is LRT construction. And you're going to ask, how am I going to connect that to history? Here we go. So I get a little annoyed when my normal routines are disrupted. And so when my traffic habits on Prairie Center Drive and Technology Drive and Flying Cloud are disrupted, I get a little annoyed. But I really shouldn't get annoyed when I think about the big picture because we really have an 800-year-old history of people moving through Eden Prairie. So along, in the 1980s, there was a movie, Planes, Trains, and Automobiles, by John Candy and Steve Martin. And he talked about moving through the country to get home for the holidays. So if we were going to make a movie about transportation in Eden Prairie, it would be planes, trains, automobiles, horses, ox cart trails for Paul, riverboats, ferry landings, canoes, and foot trails. So I can put up with the little disturbance of my traffic patterns associated with LRT. So, thank you for this award. It means a lot to me. The community means a lot to me. Thank you.
Steve, you justified again how appropriate that award is for you. Thank you. That's very interesting and wise comments. So thank you. All right. The next item of business, do you want to introduce it? Or do you want me to go right into it? It's up to you.
I believe.
The Senior Awareness Month.
Yeah, I believe, Mayor, I think Mr. Lothammer has a few words.
Mr. Lothammer, please.
Your Honor, council members, tonight, we are going to have a proclamation for May being Senior Awareness Month. And we do this every year. And also, at our senior center, we do quite a few more programs during that month to be able to serve our seniors. As you recall, several months ago, we accepted a couple donations that would allow us to do some upgrades to our upper part of that facility. And if you haven't had a chance to stop by, anytime that we're open, stop by and check it out. And we invite the entire community to do that as well. It's really been a big improvement. It allows people to come and spend time, not just come to a class, be there for the class and leave, but to be able to meet their friends, stay after class with a couple people, help build a puzzle, have a cup of coffee, and really create that community. And especially for new people to our community, maybe don't know a big group. They can come at one and two people and be able to have an experience in that great socialization. So although every month, we do quite a bit at the senior center for seniors, this is Senior Awareness Month. And tonight, we have with us some members of our Senior Advisory Council, who play a big role in helping advise us in some of our decisions that happen there and also some of the programming out in the community for seniors. So I'd like to invite them forward to introduce themselves and also tell us a little bit about what they're seeing happening at the senior center.
Hello, I'm Gail Smith, and I am the chairman of the Senior Advisory Council. I belong to the book club there, and I'm active in some of the games that are played regularly and enjoy the dinners and parties and all the wonderful things that happen at the senior center.
Thanks, thank you.
I'm Beth Flapp, and this is my first time on the senior center advisory council, and it's quite interesting. It is really very much a fun thing to do. At the senior center, I participate in some of the games they have and the socialization and with the new area that we have to sit. They've got great chairs, by the way, so, you know, you can really sit in them. I also take part in the quilting program that we have there. And each May, it is raffled off. And the money goes to the senior center and for to help with the expenses of the quilting. It's, it's a great place. It really is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you gray-haired guys ready for me to talk to you?
Oh, yeah.
You know, we're looking for recruits. You can, you can have gray hair, or you could be bald, either one, so. My name is Ken. Sorry about that. My name is Ken Berg, and I'm, I'm, I deal with the men on Friday, the woodchucks. And on Monday morning, we do current events. We keep people from fighting. We kind of take it out inside the room. This may be why the place had to be re-revealed, fixed up after we were done.
Patched all the holes.
But we have 20 to 30 guys on Friday and 20 to 30 men and women on Monday. And welcome to anybody, at any age, really. And it's one of the great things the community has done. I've been around the longest, probably, from anybody there, so. And I'm lucky to be here because I'm from the south side of Chicago. Thank you.
If you all would stay there, I'll read the proclamation and then come down and give you this. And I don't know if there's anyone left to take a picture, but we could try to do that. Yep, perfect. And by the way, before I read this, Mr. Lothammer, often when businesses do a redo, remodel, they'll have, not necessarily a ribbon cutting, though it could be, but some type of reception to announce, hey, it's all done. And I was there the other day. It is amazing. So could we do something with the senior advisory board? Invite the council, invite anybody else, and just around noon or something, at some point in the next couple of weeks, have a, some type of acknowledgement of the new space? Does that work? Okay. All right, proclamation, City of Eden Prairie, Hennepin County, Minnesota. Whereas, the increasing number of seniors in Eden Prairie bring many opportunities and challenges for all components of our city, families, businesses, and government. And, whereas every segment of our society is influenced by the needs, the resources, and expertise of our seniors, and awareness improves participation and action. And whereas our Eden Prairie seniors play a pivotal role in formal and informal education, sharing years of accumulated experience and wisdom, which will impact our future. And whereas the community wishes to celebrate and acknowledge the contributions and accomplishments of the seniors in our community and recognize the organizations that serve older adults. And, whereas Senior Awareness Month recognizes that seniors are an integral part of our community. And I should add, and whereas 80% of this council absolutely could and should join the senior center. You have to wait a little bit, Ms. Toomey, but we'll wait for you. Now therefore, the Eden Prairie City Council does hereby proclaim May 2022 as Senior Awareness Month, adopted by the Eden Prairie City Council on this third day of May 2022, Ronald E. Case Mayer, and then Kathy Nelson, Mark Freiberg, P. Gene Orion, and Lisa Toomey as council. So I'll come down and give this to you.
I've taken courses occasionally there, not during COVID. It wasn't COVID.
All right. Eden Prairie Business Survey, Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Approximately every three years, I would say, it's not as exactly on schedule of the every other year of our resident survey, but approximately every three, no more than four years, we do a similar statistically significant survey of our businesses. And I believe for all those surveys, we've used the Morris Leatherman Group to help conduct that survey. So we have Peter Leatherman tonight with us to provide all the results of the survey to the city council members tonight. And then I probably would take a moment to add right now that the city and chamber are hosting an event next Monday, late afternoon. I believe it starts at about 4:30. I think Peter comes on stage at about 5:00 or 5:30 to do the same presentation at Fat Pants. And so the chamber is helping put on that event. So we would encourage our businesses, if they're able to come, to attend that event as well.
And the entire council is welcome and invited?
Absolutely, yeah.
I believe they have been.
Yeah, I believe so.
Perfect. Please, thank you.
Wonderful. It's a pleasure to be here with you. Four years, a lot has happened in four years. When I was out here in 2018, we'll start out with, I think when we started in 2011, it was important to put all the results in context because at that point, we were still maybe in the middle of the recession, maybe the third quarter of the recession. So that result deserves an asterisk. This result also deserves an asterisk, since the pandemic and everything that's happened. I guarantee you, the results would have been different last year, and they'd probably be different next year, as we continue to with the pandemic. But now we have macroeconomic issues and concerns that you're going to see that business owners and managers have. Just to review with everybody what we undertook for the city once again. We spoke with 400 randomly selected owners and chief decision-makers in businesses in Eden Prairie. The phone calls were collected between April 5th and April 24th. The average completion time was 15 minutes, non-response rate of 5%. And the 400 sample, the margin of error with that is plus or minus 5% in 95 out of 100 cases. The margin of error is always determined by the size of the random sample, not the percent of the population. So 400 random businesses in Eden Prairie or 400 random businesses across the state of Minnesota is plus or minus 5%. Put up some demographics, and for the purpose of this, I put up the 2018 versus 2022, just to see. I've tried to keep the color consistent, so the blue bar is going to be the current 2022 results. Very little change in how they self-describe themselves. We read this list, and they pick a category that they fall into. Service, almost a flat majority, that's been pretty consistent over the course of the studies, at 47%. Sales and marketing, down a little bit. Any sort of change that is statistically significant is going to be 6% or greater when we're comparing it with margins of errors. And then everything else in single digits, from general profession, manufacturing, down to health. If we continue with the demographics, a little bit of a shift, obviously, here because of the pandemic. Not a lot of new businesses have obviously started up over the past couple of years. So the less than five-year category moved from 19% to 7% of businesses saying they've been in the community for that period of time. The median comes in right at about 14 and a half years. The typical business has been in the community. The number of employees, a little bit of an uptick. The average business in the community has roughly 13 employees. And a statistically significant change at the bottom is, do they intend to hire more employees in the coming year? Actually, a 10% increase from 30% to 40%. And we're going to see some concern out there at a macro level about the ability to find qualified and trained workers in the community. And that's obviously not unique to Eden Prairie. Continuing then with the demographics, the percent of the workforce that lives in Eden Prairie, the average comes in roughly at about 60% of the workforce actually resides in Eden Prairie. 8% indicated that they were a home-based business. 28% indicated that they were an owner, down 30, from 37% in 2018, with an uptick now with more general managers instead of owners. The manager label, still about the same, 44% this time. And also a statistically significant change in male versus female business owners, with it being equal, 50/50. That's been going down over the course of the decade. Last time, it was 57/43 when we started. That was in the 60, 65% range. So normally, before I go into the results, any questions on methodology or demographics?
Just the, the demographics are showing a nice spread on your last couple slides. Do we have data out of the chamber or from the city or even past surveys to match to see that this actually did indeed? I know statistically significant, but we actually got the spread out of 400 that matches the actual population?
Looking at history, we don't, I don't know if the chamber has the statistics to back it up. The US Census, obviously, doesn't necessarily have all the greatest information on businesses itself, residents. But historically, it lines up with some obvious deviations, especially on the longevity in the community of the business. That'd be more fluid.
So you feel pretty confident that the spread is likely pretty close to that?
Yes, yeah, within the margin of error.
Good.
Yep. So, survey says, we go through a list and ask them, how important of each of the following, was this a reason for locating in Eden Prairie? You can see now, what's at the top of the list is supportive city services. It's actually a 14% increase. It leads at 90% now from 2015, or 18. And you can see the consistent climb up on the support of city services for the business community over the past decade. A great place to live and work was high before. It remains high, basically nine out of 10 owners and managers. The fair value of leases and rental rates had the uptick in 2018, and that's stabilized now with 85%, talking about that. The low crime rate has been key to eight out of 10 business owners over the course of the, of the studies. And we're going to see actually some specifics on their perception on crime. Property taxes, not statistically significant, it's on the edge, but 81% are indicating that property taxes and, and the rate was an important reason for locating. High-speed internet access, a 17% increase. You can see that dropped out of, coming out of 2011 and was stable from 15 to 18, and now has moved back up again in 2022. Proximity to customers and suppliers, down a little bit, but still eight out of 10 businesses and owners and managers indicating that was the reason.
So they're not judging us there. They're simply saying that these are reasons that they moved here.
Exactly. There's no evaluation on it.
It's like property taxes, that's a really good thing, even though I realize it's not within the, oh, it's within the seven-point variance. But nonetheless, that a more and more number of businesses like it here or are choosing here because of our favorable taxes.
Exactly.
Because that is really interesting.
It's a competitive advantage. Obviously, they see it that way.
And supportive city services. I mean, some of these, I would say, if they dropped, you know, what, high-speed internet, I mean, it is what it is, and communities have what they have. And it's good that they appreciate it here. But, but I'm really excited about the property tax, supportive city services.
Mm-hmm. Going to the next slide, continuing with the list. Now, we're, we're still, you know, keep in mind, we still have three quarters on the next two with highway access and qualified workforce indicating that was the reason. Then, a market, almost a doubling of parks, walkway pass, and outdoor amenities. And I think that has some impact from the pandemic, obviously. I mean, what we've seen in all our research over the past two years is people are much more in touch with where they're living and where they're working. Specifically, where they're living, you have a majority of these folks living in Eden Prairie already. And so that is obviously a value that they hold important to them. Good housing choices is down a bit, about half of businesses point to that. And then the presence of similar businesses. And then at the bottom, access to public transportation. That's been pretty consistent, I mean, from 38%, three times, 40% is a high. Four out of 10 business owners choosing that.
So really, I, I wonder if this question or this item shouldn't be more labeled, the reasons we stay? Because they're not really, I mean, it's so far back, when they moved here, and you said... Because they're not really, I mean, it's so far back that when they moved here, and you said that the number of new businesses in the last five years has declined substantially. So really, this is telling us, these are, this is what we appreciate about Eden Prairie, and this is why we're here.
Essentially, yes. It, it's choosing and staying, yeah, at the same time.
I understand.
How about the pandemic? Everybody wants to know how that has impacted everybody in Eden Prairie with business owners and managers. 78% indicated the pandemic did have an impact on their business. 22% indicated not much, with four out of 10 businesses saying it had a major impact. So we followed up with that 78% and went through this list and asked, did it impact your business? Did you have an increase in the item? Did you have a decrease, or did it remain about the same? You can see the two areas that hit. Now, this is the 78%. Revenue, 73% of businesses reported a decline in revenue. So approximately 55% of businesses in Eden Prairie said that they were impacted, the pandemic, with revenue. Customers, over 50% indicated they had a decrease in customers. The number of workers, about 47%, so about four in 10 businesses, if we look at the whole, have been impacted with the number of workers. And you can see a pretty equal distribution. It's interesting, a perfect bell-shaped curve on the productivity of employees, with 12% saying that's increased, 12% saying it's decreased, and 70% saying it's about the same. The impact of the pandemic, though, has been revenue and customers. Then we come back and we ask all the businesses, have you had to change where and how employees worked during the pandemic? Now, this obviously is going to depend and vary from community to community based on retail and restaurants, because it's very hard, for the most part, to sell retail from your home unless you're Amazon or doing eBay. So 61% indicated, yes, they had changed the way their employees worked, okay? Of that 61%, we followed up and asked, do you believe you will operate your business the way it was before the pandemic? So this is kind of the, the key question. Everybody wants to know, are we going to go back to normal with how businesses are operated? 20% said, no, they did not see themselves going back to the way it was. 77% said, yes. 3% were still unsure. So if we do the calculation, the 20% of 61%, about one in eight businesses, 12% of businesses, probably are not going to go back to the way they operated before the pandemic. And they were primarily in the service and the sales and marketing categories. The statistical significant difference was in sales and marketing. What's an overall grade of the city business climate? This is unique, when I just look at a macro level from everything we've seen in doing public opinion research over the course of the pandemic. For the most part, I can say folks are just less enthusiastic than they have been in the past. Minnesotans were always difficult to be enthusiastic. The pandemic made them even less so. They haven't shifted to unfavorable, but they've gone from, from an A to a B, from an excellent to a good, from a strongly agree to an agree. But we had that huge jump in 2018 of those grading the business climate here as giving it an A. It actually stayed the same. 49% graded the business climate as an A, 45% a B, 6% a C, nobody gave it a D or an F, and 1% refused. It is also important that I think the businesses that had difficulty or any sort of issues with the pandemic coming into it, the pandemic, have no longer are open at this point in time. So these, basically, is a poll now of the survivors of the pandemic. And where they are now is just as positive as where they were in 2018 at the macro question on the business climate. A new question we've added was an open-ended, what's the most serious issue facing your business? They can tell us anything. We collapse them down into categories. We always look for this one if we have 20, 25% or greater. One in four, one in five of people indicating the same response, that would be a major concern. We don't have anything that hits that 20, 25, 30% level. We have three that hit double digits and two in the high single digits. The lack of workers, which we'll see a little bit more in-depth, the lack of customers, inflation, supply chain delays, and then business taxes. Then we go down to single, just getting back to normal, single digits, cost of supplies, lack of profits. If we go down to the bottom, though, now keep in mind, you had 22% of businesses say that they did not have much of an impact from the pandemic. 20% of businesses say they don't have any serious issues within the community, which is very, you know, normally folks are finding more things to have issues with. The norm on nothing, that booster, is about 5% right now. So you, you have concerns, but really, you'll have, and when we go to the next chart, you're going to see, the concerns are much more at a macroeconomic level than a microeconomic level. This list was created also for this survey. We have not asked it this way in the past. And the question is, and we went through each one of these and said, is this a very serious problem, somewhat serious problem, not too serious problem, or not at all serious problem? Inflation, obviously, is at the top of everybody's minds. 99% said it was a serious problem, with 82% saying very serious. Just general economic conditions, 98% with two thirds indicating a very serious problem. Then we'll drop down to a second tier of just the overall cost of doing business, 76% with 48% very serious. The supply chain at 69% with 48% very serious. And we'll go down to the third tier where we get into the taxes. The business property taxes, 77%, and state and federal taxes at 87%. On an intensity on the very serious on the tax issue, both the property taxes and the state and federal taxes are very serious at 36 and 38%. But when we add the somewhat serious, it tips more as a concern for state and federal taxes. This question and the responses specifically on the business property taxes is going to come into play at the end of the survey when we do an overall evaluation, and I'll share how that comes into play. Everything else, then, we continue down the list from finding quality employees, the housing market, crime, traffic congestion, and at the bottom, the lack of public transportation. But the major concerns in the community by the entire impact of the concern and also the intensity of the very serious are macro-level issues until you get down to the fifth one at this point in time with the business property taxes.
Mr. Getchell, could I just ask you quickly, just to remind me, what, what percentage portion of the business property taxes would you say is out of our control? I'm thinking the formula setting.
Right, the fiscal disparities formula, 40, about 40%.
A 40% of the hit on, on the property tax for a business is beyond the control of what we do up here at this council.
Correct. It gets put into, it gets put into the regional pool.
Right.
And then spread back out, as you know, from the budget meetings, our residents actually pay a bit more for that business pool to exist.
Exactly, yeah. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that for people as well. Okay, thanks.
We went through a list that we've gone through in the past and asked them if, how much of a focus should the City of Eden Prairie Economic Development Division have on each of these areas? I've put up, you know, the historical over the 11 years, but there's been really statistically significant increases across the board. And I think a lot of this is, is trying to set a stable, a good foundation when the macro-level economics come back into some sort of equilibrium, that the basis is still strong. So there's more support for, focus for retaining and growing existing businesses. That's up seven points. Recruiting new businesses, up 13 points. Investing in redevelopment, up eight points. Low interest, small business loans and grants, up 13 points. Improving communication, no change, but still eight out of 10. Attracting qualified workers and talent, 9% increase. Better training for existing workers, 9% increase. Building traffic infrastructure, that's down 8%. And we're going to see, obviously, the pandemic has changed some commuting patterns and then, and the reliance on, on the roads and the traffic infrastructure. And then a market increase of 16% on expanding collaborative workspaces in the community. So amongst the owners and managers, there is much more of a desire for focus across the board. You know, the, the low is seven out of 10. The high is almost 10 out of 10, at 94 out of 100. So we asked this question in the last three surveys, and this shows the concern on workers. In 2018, 73% of businesses said that there were plenty of skilled workers for their business. It's down to 50%. So half do not have concerns on the workforce, and half do know. We then asked those that said, if they do have concerns, is it difficulty finding skilled workers or difficulty finding entry-level workers? It tips towards skilled workers. You can see a doubling in that category from 16 to 33%. Difficulty finding entry level went up 6% from 10 to 16. Now, we followed up with those that indicated some difficulty, so that 49% in that category, and said, and asked them, and they said, two-thirds of those folks report that the training is good. Okay, so it's not an issue of training. There's just not enough of those workers that are trained for the positions they need. And 52% indicated that their businesses were already being impacted by this. So if we put that 49% that are saying that they're being impacted, and 52% saying it's impacting us now, the remainder are concerned it's going to impact them in the future, it's about 25, 26% of businesses currently in Eden Prairie are saying they're being impacted now by not having enough skilled or entry-level workers. Partnerships with local school districts. We started this series in 2018. It was a winner. It remains a winner. There's always been a strong appeal across Minnesota on partnerships between private and public. In 2018, we had 94%. This time, we have 96% supporting partnerships with the local school district. Interestingly, there's also statistically significant change in asking them, do they think that the partnerships, these types of partnerships could benefit their business?
Do you cross-check your 400 list to see how many are chamber members, or can you do that?
We took out that question this time.
But you have the names of businesses in your list.
I could go through, yeah, and recode it.
I'm just curious, because the chamber, we are involved with the city and the school district and with our entrepreneurship initiative, and there's just more awareness, I think. I just was curious of those businesses that are members of the chamber. They might have a different take on this.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I could go back and recode, because I
Yeah, I don't need that information, but it is, I'm just more curious about it.
Yeah. So we do have a 12% increase, though, in folks indicating that, yes, these partnerships could benefit their business also. And then the final part of the partnership section, we asked, would they be interested in partnerships with Eden Prairie High School or Hennepin Technical College to align educational, education with trends and standards? In 2018, 53% said they were interested. This time, 70% say they're interested. What about assisting with on, on the job training? And we gave some examples about the sandbox project at the high school, those sorts of things. That moved from 54% to 69%. So there is more interest. Now, the devil's always in the details when you're asking somebody about interest versus actually following through with behavior, because it's going to be the specifics, how much time is involved, everything like that. But there is growing interest, and it does relate back to, the one thing that was common through those increases was if they said in the previous set of questions that they were having difficulty finding workers in their business. We went through the list and asked, is this, is, are, are the, any of these issues impacting your ability to find qualified workers? What leads the list has been a pretty common theme right now nationally and across the state, and that's affordable childcare. 61% of businesses say that it's either a very serious, very seriously impacting their ability, or somewhat seriously, with 31% indicating that it's a very serious concern to attract qualified workers. The affordability of housing, it's a majority, 55%. The variety of housing options, down a little bit, but still 47%. Then adequate amenities in the community, and then adequate transportation options. So a very clear hierarchy here on where folks' concern are on attracting qualified workers. It's focused much more on childcare and then the affordability of housing. Has their business been impacted by traffic congestion? We're not surprisingly at the low. It seems like we have more traffic congestion now than we did three months ago, but still, it's much more minimal than it was. Only 4% of businesses are saying it's either a very or somewhat serious problem. This question, we did put in context and say, please only consider crime in Eden Prairie, not what you've heard or experienced elsewhere. Because crime is a macro issue that spills down to the micro very quickly. So we did ask them, okay, set that aside, which, you know, we didn't say Minneapolis and St. Paul or anything like that. We just said, please only think about Eden Prairie. And you can see on this one, you have a pretty clear bell curve again. You have 17% that think it's increased, 15% think it's decreased, and 65% says, say it's remained about the same. Contact with City Hall has been very consistent over all 11 years, six out of 10, basically. This time, 66% indicating that they have not had contact with City Hall, and 34% indicating that they had. Primarily, two-thirds of those folks have contacted City Hall once during the past year. Now, how do they rate that contact? You can see there was a big uptick in 2018, moving from the somewhat satisfied to the very satisfied category, and that stabilized also. You had 72% indicating they were very stabilized or satisfied, 28% indicating somewhat satisfied. Nobody said not to or not at all satisfied. So that, that you've got that 34% you're serving, you, you can't get much higher in satisfaction with 100%. And the enthusiastic rating is extraordinarily strong. Do they have any intentions over the next five years to do any of the following? Expand in Eden Prairie? You can see there was a drop in 2018, and that's been stabilized now. 10% indicate, yes, they would think of, of expanding in Eden Prairie. 4% said they might consider relocating with an Eden Prairie. We saw that drop in 2015 to 2018. And then what about relocating out of Eden Prairie? Very few businesses have any intention. If they do, we followed up and asked why, and they were much more macro. A lot of it was about weather and moving south and getting out of winter. Unless you can make it warmer.
That's happening.
This is the question that I alluded to with the concern on business taxes. This question asks, when folks consider the city services they receive and the property taxes paid, how do they rate that value? In 2015 and 18, it was 88% rated the value favorably, 8 and 12% unfavorably. This time, it's 71/29. So there's been a 17-point drop in favorable, 17-point increase in the unfavorable. Now, in looking at it, what I did is I went back and cross-tabbed some questions, and specifically, their rating of the concern on business property taxes. That 38% that said their, their concern on business property taxes was very serious for their business, they basically split 50/50. They, they didn't go into the poor category. They went into the only fair category. And so you do have economic conditions, because revenue is revenue, a concern on profit, the cost of doing business. When we look at the previous question on satisfaction with their experience with City Hall, and then the last question, satisfaction with the decision-making at City Hall, there's no change. There's no statistically significant difference with those that are very concerned about business property taxes. Their experience is the same with the city. The relationship is the same with the city. But what's different now is the concern on all sorts of costs to their business, and that is also business property taxes, obviously. And so when we look at that last question, the satisfaction with decision-making, you can see we had the uptick from 2011 to 2015, from 77% to 89%. And now it's not statistically significant, but it's the high over 11 years, with 91% indicating that they're satisfied with the decision-making process from the City Hall. 4% dissatisfied, and 6% are unsure. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
No, this is not only helpful, but I think for the most part, really gratifying, good news. Council? Council member Toomey.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for coming here tonight. And it's very interesting, particularly the impact the pandemic the impact the pandemic has had and, and the, and the problems, the issues that they've had, so it's really good for us to, you know, know that, so we can, we can possibly help with solutions. Thanks.
Anything else? All right. We will have access to this how and when, and is it in our computers now? Did it get in our packet? I'm so sorry, I did not see.
No, Mayor, you're, no, it did not get in your packet, but this, along with our resident survey, we put in detail on our website.
Perfect.
So it should be available to everybody.
Thank you. Thanks for all your good work.
Wonderful.
Appreciate doing business with you. All right. We are moving to the approval of the agenda and other items of business. Is there anything to add under Councilmember Reports? Or, Mr. Getchell, is there anything else to add from a staff perspective? Councilmember Toomey.
Oh, I want to make a motion?
Okay, please, go ahead and make a motion to approve the agenda.
Sure, I will move to approve the agenda.
Sir, second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right. Minutes. Are there any items or issues or corrections, edits that you found in reading the two different, the workshop and the meeting? Councilmember Toomey.
So, yes, I have a clarification to make on the minutes from our workshop. In the minutes, under the second section, it says Eden Prairie Historical Society. The Cummins Phipps Grill House has been restored, and they look forward to hosting events. They will be partnering with People Reaching Out to People Prop. So they're going to be partnering with Prop Shop. They're two different nonprofits. Prop is our food shelf, and Prop Shop helps people with clothing and household items that they might need to get a leg up, to get a step up. And just while we're on the subject, I'd like to give a shout out to, because I'm involved with, I'm on the board for the Prop Shop, so I know. But there's one, one extraordinary volunteer, everybody that volunteers for the Prop Shop is extraordinary, but one I'd like to talk about is, her name's Rondi Flagstad, and she's been a long, long-time volunteer for the Prop Shop, and she's the one responsible for pulling the vintage and antique items that are going to be sold at the Cummins Phipps Grill House on, when is it, May sixth and seventh? And all the money that they get from selling will go back to the Prop Shop to help the clients there, so. I just wanted to clarify that. You don't have to put all that in, just put Prop Shop.
Well, as long as we're, what's a good word? Marketing or selling here. So that Prop Shop sale at the Cummins Grill House this Friday and Saturday, what happens? The Prop Shop gets donations throughout the year of all kinds of things, right? And if they can give them back out to people, they do. If they can put them into their store, they sell them, and they use that money to go buy things to, again, to give to people in need. And so throughout the year, they get a lot of vintage, collectibles, antiques, and they accumulate them, and they put them all together, and that's what this Friday and Saturday is a sale at the Cummins Grill House. And if I really was going to do this well and prepared, I would get the time, I don't know it, maybe, do you know it? I don't know.
No.
Probably ten o'clock or something, I don't know. Call somebody, I don't want to say call my wife, but somebody that's involved with this, and find out, maybe call the Prop Shop. But at any rate, it's a great event, and so if you like that kind of thing, I would encourage you to come out Friday and Saturday this week. So with that, any other questions about the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve both the workshop and the council meeting held back on April nineteenth?
Move to approve the following city council minutes. The council workshop held Tuesday, April nineteenth, 2022, and the council meeting held Tuesday, April nineteenth, 2022.
Sir, second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right. Consent calendar. Any items you wish to ask more questions about, even pull off temporarily, anything from anybody? Are you okay with A through M? If so, would somebody please make the motion?
I'll move for approval of items A through M on the consent calendar.
For second.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right. We do have one public hearing this evening, Mr. Getchell.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a good tie into our award winner tonight, because our heritage preservation award winner mentioned Camp Edenwood in his remarks, our historic property. So they are, True Friends is a nonprofit organization that leases the property that the city owns to operate. Great organization, environment, open to experiences and adventures for all individuals. They are doing some work out at Camp Edenwood, and, and the entire area, as you know, is considered historic. Not all of the individual properties in Camp Edenwood are. Several are, not all are. But either way, when work is done in that area, a certificate of appropriateness is required by the city. And so True Friends came to the Heritage Preservation Commission at their April eighteenth meeting, and they had a request for a certificate of appropriateness to, again, do some building improvements on their site, and then basically siding, soffit, fascia, shingles, and doors on what's known as the Birchwood Cabin out at Camp Edenwood. And the HPC recommended approval to the city council for that certificate of appropriateness at the historic property. So they are now here tonight to present a brief overview of their improvements. You would then hold a public hearing and then take action to adopt findings of fact and approve the certificate of appropriateness for the work done on the Birchwood Cabin at Glen Lake Children's Camp. I do know that the president, CEO of True Friends is here to present an overview and staff, and he could answer any questions that the public or the council has.
Hi, welcome. Go ahead and state your name and.
John LeBlanc, True Friends. Mayor, council members, thanks for your time. We're excited to do another project of improvement at Camp Edenwood. Do you have the PowerPoint? Beautiful. Perfect. So as Rick mentioned, it was at the Heritage Preservation Commission on April eighteenth.
I think you have a clicker right there, John, so you can just move it, yeah?
Oh, I got control. Beautiful, thank you. So there you can see the camp. Those of you who have not, if, if you've never been out there, I highly recommend it, and I'd love to give you a tour. It's a beautiful camp, and we're lucky to have it. You'll see the Lion's Den, and next to it is Birchwood Cabin. Just a little bit of detail, and Rick, or Ron, or maybe someone else, Jay, if I don't get this completely right, but I can't show you the, anyways, you see the Birchwood Cabin, the location. We'll be eventually looking at the Lion's Den, we'll see some photos. We completed the exterior renovation of the Lion's Den in 2020. It was a great time, we couldn't do anything at the camp that year. Just drawing your attention also, the Burgland Center in the, the bottom of the slide, that building was built in 2016, 2017, and that's a respite center as well. We use that for weekday and weekend respite. Really cool project. And if some of you know, the, the playground is right there in the center. I should highlight, sorry, the Heritage Preservation, and you know the city owns the Am I doing this right? There we go. There's Birchwood Cabin. It's kind of a funny-looking cabin. It looks a lot better inside than it does outside. It's very practical. So when you go in, you go, oh, okay, I get it. But that's what we want to do, the complete exterior renovation. As Rick mentioned, siding, soffit, fascia, shingles, doors. All the materials have been approved, we've used, we used all these same materials for the Lion's Den. There's what we did in 2020. Lion's Den, looks great with the maintenance-free siding. It looks very much like the dorms, the historic dorms, and the Burgland Center was also made to look in the same brand and, and look and feel as well. There's the Burgland Center, so you can see. I know at times it can be difficult for groups like us to have to go with all the regulations of, of what the historic district requires, but it, I mean, I have to admit, it's good for the camp. It's good that there's consistency across this, so, looks beautiful. That's all pretty basic, I don't know, just at the bottom, city council staff recommend the approval of the certificate of appropriateness. It meets all the requirements. Is that it? Yeah, that's it. Can I answer any questions?
I just want to say that, and I guess to my colleagues up here as well, that this might at times seem a minor change to bring before the council, but it's, it's really, and I so am thankful for John, who is leading this organization now, but it's, it's one of the only two places in all of Eden Prairie that are on the National Historic Register. So it's an incredibly important historic piece. It's one of, if it's still accurate, I have everything I've ever heard, I think you know more than I about this, but it's one of only two intact, original tuberculosis camps for children from nineteen-ten across the United States of America, and we have it right here in Eden Prairie. So to have a, an entity like your organization coming in and taking care of it and, and valuing it is invaluable to us. So I really, really deeply appreciate that. So that means that every small, and I know it's been, it's not, I don't know, painful is the right word, but it's cumbersome at times to have, to bring back, I don't even know if you have to, I'm being facetious, maybe, maybe not, to paint, change the color or whatever, but I mean, it's tedious to have to bring back every small minor change. I just appreciate having someone using this camp that is willing and excited to do that. And I, I think having the confluence of the history along with continuing to serve children is, is amazing, so. Thank you for, and thank you for what you do, you know, you have an amazing nonprofit, so. And John and I are members of the Lions Club now as well, so we get to see each other occasionally at that, which meets at the camp.
Yep.
Oh, did I say it meets on, no, I'm just kidding. You can, you can find out on your own how to join the Lions. So, council, any questions, comments?
With the state approval and our wonderful commission's approval, I see no reason not just to go ahead and certify.
It's fairly perfunctory. Again, it comes with force because it's a good thing that it does, but councilmember, oh, I'm getting tricked by that. Anything? Councilmember Freiberg? All right. I think that's it, we'll go ahead and make the motion, I suppose. There are no more questions?
Sue want to hold the public hearing, but then you can do the motion all at once after that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good catch. So you may sit down. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that's wishing to address the council on this issue, please come forward now. All right. Seen, so every time they turn the camera, I know that the people watching, like, no one's there, but with everyone having the ability to watch on camera at home, we, we do believe we have an audience more at home, so we just want to let you know that when that camera turns, that the people in the audience might be staff and et cetera. And we did have a larger audience earlier, too, so I guess we drove them away. But is there, with, if there's no more questions or comments, if there's somebody that would close the public hearing, and go ahead and read the rest of the motion.
Sure, I'll move to close the public hearing and adopt the findings of fact and approve certificate of appropriateness, 2022 dash zero one dash zero zero one, for new siding, roofing, doors, and soffit, and fascia for the Birchwood Cabin at the Glen Lake Children's Camp.
Sir, second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right. Thank you again for all you do, and good luck with this, it'll be fun to go up and see it sometime and see it completed. I haven't even really been in the, the event, I don't know what you're calling, I'm sorry, the.
Burgland.
Yeah, I haven't been in that building, I don't believe, so I'd love a tour of that. Let's get together sometime. All right. Council, let's see, payment of claims, any items to question or call out? Now, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval, payment of claims is submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye.
I believe we have reached the end of our agenda. There's nothing else to come before us this evening? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Opposed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.